Yeah, well Bruce, Bruce just stepped away, so I'm gonna wait just for him to come. As soon as I see him emerge, we'll come to order and get started, so. Yeah, we're good. Oh, he's right there chatting, so we're good. Bruce is in the restroom, yeah. Alright, I've got, so I was wrong again, imagine that, it is 6:15, we will come to order for regular session. My note here, Oliver, from our Boy Scouts is going to come on up, we're gonna do invocation, pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the nation under God. Please join me in the... Honor Texas flag, pledge allegiance to Texas, state, honor of God, one and invisible. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, may your grace cover this meeting, pray that all voices may be heard, and this will be a safe place for people to express their opinions. Please help guide our community leaders and their decisions they make.
Thank you, Oliver, very much. I noticed that Mary and I were a little fast with the pledge, we finished a little early. So I want to take a minute before we get started, and obviously, I think it's on everybody's mind that's here, and I personally want to thank our residents, our staff, the people across central Texas. So, for those that are not tracking, we've got a fundraiser of sorts going, the Volunteer Firefighters Association have started it, not started it, I'm sorry. We're working in collaboration with five different departments, we've got, chief, don't let me forget, we've got Bartlett, Sparta, Holland, Central Bell, and Moffett. Yeah, I said Sparta, I got it, along with our fire department, each of those locations are collecting items, collecting goods, and it's going down to the affected region. We've partnered with Bold Republic Brewing and Belton Feed, as well as 1-800 Board Up is onboard with us, and we have the folks here at the storage location here in town, I'm drawing a blank on their names, so. It's been a long two days, believe me, so. Everybody is well aware of what has taken place south of us and our neighbors, and I say to our neighbors, even though they're three hours away. I want to thank everybody that has contributed, everybody that's even thought about contributing, because I know we have folks that are just not able to do so. But just a simple thought, a simple prayer to everybody that has been affected down there. I will tell you that we sent our first load of six pallets worth of things out to San Sabat today. We have 10 more going out to Leander tomorrow, as well as probably six to eight going down to help the folks in Hunt. We have not sent anything down to Kerrville, and the reason we have not is because they have been so inundated with supplies that they are turning things back. So, we have kind of decided, the collective, to focus on some of the smaller towns and regions that have been hit by the flooding, which I'm sure if you're looking outside the window, you see the dark clouds, it's not over. So, I just wanted to take a minute personally, on behalf of everybody that's put the work in, and thank everybody, whether you're tuning in, dialing in, watching later, whether you're here, we certainly appreciate it, so. Just ask that you take a minute, give pause, and think about everything that's going on down there and the families that are affected, so.
Say a word about what specific kind of supplies are needed?
Yeah, absolutely, so currently, when we started, that's a great point, when we started, we were taking everything and anything, and I will tell you that we are going to continue to do so. The reason we're going to continue to do so is because typically what we see in these types of situations is there's quick out the gate kind of thing, but no endurance, everybody is quick to respond, they want to help, and that's awesome. I was talking to my folks up in Michigan, and I told them, I've been in Texas since 95, I was a transplant, but no state responds to it something like Texas does, I don't care where you're from, I don't care who you are, you just look across the board. So, we will continue to take, at our fire department, we will continue to take anything and everything that comes in and make sure that it gets to the right place when it's got to get there. Priority items right now are cleaning supplies, everything from bleach, mops, brooms, dust pans, things of that nature, cleaning solutions, baby wipes, any kind of wipes that they can wipe out things with, those are high priority right now. The first responders are starting to identify needs which are critical, and it's, one of the stories that was relayed to me today coming out of Hunt is they have residents that are on their hands and knees because they can't get out to get supplies, and when they can, the supplies are all bought up and pushed to the harder-hit regions. So they're actually on their hands and knees digging themselves out with their hands and with little garden shovels. So, they have requested down in Hunt, flat shovels, the rounded shovels, large, you know, gardening-type shovels, work gloves, work boots, socks, they said, the last check I had, they've got all kinds of footies and calf-length socks, they need the boot-length socks, because they're going through those and the guys and gals that are working up and down the river, you know, their feet are getting saturated, so those are the kind of high priority items right now. So, we are accepting monetary donations and checks made out to the Volunteer Firefighters Association, NPR VFA. Those funds currently right now are probably going to be earmarked to supplies that will be going directly to the first responders down there. They're cutting through cypress trees, large cypress trees, and the chief I talked to down there today said they don't get through a tree before they have to stop and change the chain out, it's just the wood is so hard. So, they're destroying chains, they're destroying chainsaws, I get it, those things are a little bit more higher-priced, but that's what we're going to kind of focus on with monetary donations, I think, so. Great effort by everybody, super, super proud of everybody, and just super proud to be, what are we? Are we Point Indians, are we Pointinovians, what are we, I don't even know what we are, Morgans Pointians, Pointy Head people? So, it's been phenomenal, and from me and everybody involved, I thank you very much, so. Okay, let's get down to business, we've covered most things in the workshop, which while I was summarized again as we get to it, so I don't anticipate being here too long, we will start with citizens' comments on agenda items, again, I read. This is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for their discussion or to address topics of interest with the presentation, limited three minutes, please. All speakers will conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner, all speakers will be recognized prior to speaking and will announce their name and address to be included in the minutes. State law prohibits the mayor and members of city council from commenting on any statement or engaging in dialogue without an appropriate agenda item being posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting laws. Ms. Denise, you are first up.
Denise Seibert, 114 Great West Loop. I wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the debris cleanup team. Thank you NPR workers that have worked so hard cleaning up all the debris from the tornado and typical yard cleanup. I appreciate your diligence to help us in our fire safety commitment, so I appreciate that very much. And I'm also going to bring up, last time we met, Michelle Wiseman brought up about putting a stop sign at the four corners there between 2483 and NPR, and I really think we need to go with those four stop signs. I don't know what it takes, I don't know if we have to contact Bell County to get that done, I don't know if we need to get a sign-up sheet and say, make this happen, and bring in, you know, people's autographs and say, you know, we need this to happen, but, you know, it is a public safety concern, and I don't know if we can put that on our agenda and then make it move forward, I'm not sure. But because we have that school, I think the traffic's getting higher, and if she's hearing things, I don't want anybody to get hurt, you know, so make some improvements in that area to keep our community safe, so, that's it, thank you for letting me be hurt.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kaylee. I knew that was you.
Hi, you guys, I'm Kaylee Brown, my parents are Tanya and Dragon, they have the property on 29 Vista. They're out of town for my siblings' little volleyball tournament, but yeah, we're here for the short-term rental permit. We're really excited about this property, we have, my oldest is having a baby in Temple, so that's kind of why they bought the property, and they're always traveling for my siblings' volleyball, so they're like, this would be a great way to get some income, but also be close to the baby, and yeah, they just want me to show face and say hi to y'all, they're sad they couldn't meet here. Their tournament was in Florida, and they're like, we'll fly back for the eighth, I was like, you guys, I can drive from Dallas, I'm good.
A little closer.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, first thing up today is a public hearing, we're going to open a public hearing, 25007, for the public to share their thoughts and views on 29 Vista Drive, the special use permit for short-term rentals, which was just referenced in the application. So, we will open the public hearing at 6:25 for our residents, any residents that wish to speak on 29 Vista Drive. I'm gonna go with no, so, so we will close the public hearing then at 18, I'm sorry, 6:25, military stuff. Yeah, 18:25, and then we will move right on to ordinance 25011, which is discuss and consider an ordinance granting a specific use permit for 29 Vista Drive, NPR, as listed. So, council, we discussed this in, or you guys, maybe we discussed it, the body discussed it during the workshop, for our residents that were not here or were not monitoring back then, we do have a complete packet provided by the owners. It appeared to be complete and thorough, as far as I know, so. I will entertain a motion to adopt 25011 from council.
I move that we adopt 25011, granting a specific use permit for 29 Vista Drive.
Second.
Okay, I've got a second, Dorothy, if you didn't hear that, Roxanne the first and Sam the second. Any discussion, additional discussion on the matter?
I was just going to say, reading through the packet, the owners of the property did write very clear, specific letters, very, it was very, very well-done, and everything was in order, so happy to grant it.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, any opposed? No, I'm sorry, I always gotta forget, there's that, any opposed? Okay, motion passed, unanimous, 4-0, congratulations. By the way, please pass that on, yeah, please pass that on for us. Yeah, be careful, tell them to be safe. Okay, next is a consent agenda, which tonight includes considering the minutes for a regular council meeting dated June 10, 2025. Council, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Can I get a second? Any discussion, any changes that need to take place? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, I got you, any opposed? None opposed, 4-0 on that vote as well, approved. Moving on for informational reports, we had information 25001, which was the TCEQ Annual Drinking Water Quality Report. I think most of our residents, you probably got that in your mailbox, and that was discussed in the workshop as well. There's no action required on that one, other than the fact that it just gets presented officially to council, which it has been, so. We will move on to the resolutions, resolution 25022, discuss and consider a resolution to establish a formal automatic aid agreement between the City of Morgantown Resort Fire Rescue and Moffett Volunteer Fire Department. This was discussed during the workshop, but since we have so little on the agenda, chief, do you want to add anything additional, or? No, you're...
You just hit the highlights. I mean, if you don't mind, just a little, little quick highlight of it, so we have it on record.
Alright, better luck this time, alright, good evening, how's everybody doing tonight? Alright, so what's up on the ordinance agenda tonight for us is a formal automatic aid agreement with Moffett Volunteer Fire Department, which is just to our north. Historically, Moffett has been a mutual aid partner for us, and there's a little bit of a difference between the two. Mutual aid means that if we need help, we call Moffett or anybody, and they'll come help us. That does lead to a delay in notification, the automatic agreement makes this where it automatically occurs. If a fire, a structured fire, a wild and urban interface fire, or anything that's specified in the agreement occurs in Morgans Point, or in Moffett, it's reciprocal agreement, they will automatically be dispatched by the Bell County Communications Center. When you call 911 in our community or anywhere in Bell County, those calls go directly through the Bell County Communications Center. So what this does is it saves precious minutes on the early part of the call. We know that fire doubles in size every minute, so everything we can save is very important. We have some guidance from the National Fire Protection Association under EFA 1710, stating we should have 15 firefighters on scene within nine minutes of a first alarm assignment. We have a department of five paid members that are spread out over three shifts, and we have about 20 volunteers in total. The likelihood of assembling 15 in nine minutes is slim to none, so we do need help from outside aid. This agreement is a similar agreement, almost identical to what we have with the City of Temple and the City of Belton. This just kind of codifies that with Moffett, so they will automatically be included in that. Ultimately, we'll have Morgans Point Resort, Moffett, Temple, and Belton all responding to automatic aid agreements here in Morgans Point, which guarantees us three fire engines and additional apparatus in the very first call, which is just tantamount to our success when we first get there to fight fire. As the mayor mentioned, we had a fire the other night off Eagle Landing, which is just south of Box 62105 in our city-county area. There was an automatic aid fire that Morgans Point went to with Temple, so it's something we already do in practice. We've already been responding almost automatically with Moffett, as it's been anyway, this just helps solidify their response to us, which has not historically been very good, and this will just help kind of clarify that with the comm center moving forward, so. Any questions I'm happy to address, or any concerns? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, chief. Hey, council, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 25022, the formal automatic aid agreement between NPRFR and Moffett VFD.
I move that we approve to the consideration and resolution to establish a formal automatic aid agreement between the City of Morgantown and the City of Moffett, resolution RS2502. I second it.
Okay, I got both out of both ears, so just pick one. Okay, Sam got the second.
Just one, one clarification, the agreement isn't with the City of Moffett. The agreement is with the Volunteer Fire Department of Moffett, so I don't know if that needs to be clarified, okay.
Yeah, I think, Dorothy, I think I read through that today, just to make sure that there was discussion that Dennis and I had in the office, and yes, that is, you are, you are correct.
The resolution does say in the Moffett Volunteer Fire Department, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, yes, just the way Bruce, the way you said the motion, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Yes, okay, so we got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, 4-0 on that one for approval. Resolution 25023, discuss and consider memorandum resolution to award the RFP 2501 for road improvement services to Bennett Paving Incorporated, and to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for said services. This was also discussed in the workshop.
Basically, we went out for an RFP, and this is the vendor that's met the requirements or the criteria, and they will be doing some road improvement services for the city based on the road priorities that we have, and it will not exceed the amount that's budgeted for this project.
600 less 160.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, 440?
Yeah, we're down, I think it's the ballpark right now.
But I just want to be clear before we decide on this, that this is the, a contract for services as opposed to a contract for specific road repairs, which will be coming second, is that correct?
It is for road improvement services.
Right, and so the roads, which roads they're going to do, will, council will have input on?
Well, I think, again, it'll be in the priority list.
Based on the road study that was done.
Yeah, but, but that has to be amended, because we don't have enough money to do what's in the road study. So, I just want council to have a look at what roads are going to be contracted for.
I think, didn't somebody tell me earlier that the priority, priorities are listed in that agreement, in that study?
They are, I think what she's saying is, yeah, I think what she's saying is, you know, if we have 440K in the piggy bank right now, and our first road requires $700,000, hypothetical numbers, you know, then that essentially, we're moving beyond what the study says, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothy, but yeah, I'm tracking that as well, that we should, I think, the governing body should rely on the study's sequence as far as road priorities, and if there's something that we can't address right away, we'll...
I guess the issue is like, maybe if road, you know, project, road number four ends up being, would put us over that amount, and road five would be less to make that threshold, but that would, that would be where the sequencing of that road study might not be in that priority list, the priority would be on the top, right? But you only have 400 and some thousand, so...
You're saying there's some judgment involved.
Correct, and that's what, and I understand what Ms. Dorothy's asking, she wants to see, and I'm sure the city manager wouldn't have a problem sharing that.
It's just not to exceed.
Yeah, not to exceed the budgeted amount.
I'm fine, I'm fine with the amount. The amount is what it is, but as far as prioritizing of the roads. Because I think they just did year one, year two, year three, and Sam, when you get that study, you'll be able to have a better feel for, you know, what's in it, yeah.
Dorothy, that thing, what we can do on that is, we can take that guidance, if council wants me to, I can take that guidance to Dennis and essentially tell him that if, if slash when we get to a point where we are stepping outside of the agreed-upon priority, perfect example, we get to road four, it's going to put us over budget, road five won't, then we would like that brought to you guys for discussion and consideration to approve moving five up and four down, or whether we piggybank that money and move on to the next cycle of roads, does that work for you?
Basically...
Yeah, and if I remember right, it's just year by year. We don't list our roads 1 through 45 in order of priority, it's just, year one, this is, was the priority.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a bucket, a bucket, yeah, okay.
Basically, we want to spend all that money, but no more.
Yeah, put it to work, yeah, so. Okay, there's no other discussion, I lost my place, did we have a first and a second on that? I think we did, no, we did not, okay, okay, guys threw me all out of order here. Okay, so council, I'll entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, accept resolution 25023 for Bennett Paving.
I move RS25023, memorandum resolution, award the RFP 2501 for road improvement services to Bennett Paving, authorize city manager to execute a contract for said service.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? All those, are any opposed? None, 4 to 0 again on the vote, thank you. Resolution 25024, discuss and consider resolution appointing Tom Edwards as new P&amp;Z committee member to fill vacancies through September 2026. Council, you have the application presented to you in the packet, Tom's been onboard with us before. So I will accept a motion to approve Mr. Edwards as a member of the new, not the new, but a member of the P&amp;Z committee to fill the vacancy. If I can get...
I would move to approve resolution 25034 to appoint Tom Edwards as new P&amp;Z committee member, and to fill the vacancy through September of 2026, and I'd also just like to add, thank you for serving Mr. Edwards.
Can I get a second on that, that was 24, she said 34, just for clarity, that's 25024, but yes, yeah, you're good, you're good.
Thank you.
So, can I get a second on that, please? Okay, any additional discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Resolution's good, 4 to 0, Tom, welcome aboard again, sir, thank you very much for everything you're doing. Well said. Okay, we have no additional ordinances to discuss, other than what's already been discussed, so we will move past that, and we will jump into our updates, finance director update.
Okay, good evening, thank you all for being here. I just wanted to give you all a brief update on the audits, 2223, all of the information for 2223 that we could have pretty much retrieved has been submitted, and so I'll be meeting tomorrow 8 o'clock in the morning with the auditor to find out where we are, so hopefully, next on the special call meeting, I can tell you when they can come and actually hopefully present the 2223 audit, so we're, we're on the last little leg here for the 2223 audit.
Will you know tomorrow morning, then, that the information you found is adequate?
Yes, I'll know tomorrow. 2220, for the 2324 audit, the only update on top of the audit, the update that I have for you is that we have, we're at 100% of the bank reconciliations for 2324.
Yay!
Yes, I know, yes, it's, it's, we're there, so, and we've already have quite a bit of the administrative documents, and then this past weekend, we worked and we went through boxes, I hope there's no more to go through, but all the 2324 invoices, account pay, all of that stuff's already been sorted and it's put into a filing cabinet, it's all in alphabetical order, so everything that we could find for 2324 in preparation for the audit that they may be asking for to test, we already have that as well. So, we're like at the tail end of 2223, and we're on our markers for 2324, so that's... I know Amanda had to leave to take care of her dog, but she was also very, very helpful with that, as well as the staff. For 2425, the bank reconciliations still are at 85% complete, more or less. There was some information, deposits that were in INCODE that were not moved over to FundView, so that's one of the issues there. We are still going through and doing some payroll account reconciliation that we're doing right now for this year. The priority has been, again, paying stuff that was, needed to be paid, that was overdue, past overdue for prior years. So now our focus is really cleaning up everything that we need in 2425. We're, I could say it officially, starting this weekend, we're full-fledged. Hopefully, our goal is by May to have all of 2425 cleaned up. So, when we have our meeting, a special call meeting, you'll start seeing budget amendments to clean up what needed to be cleaned up for 2324, and moving items, especially the ground storage tank. Some of that revenue needs to be brought into 2425, because they were behind schedule, so it's, now we're at the point where we're in 2425, and we need to move some revenue from 2324 to 2425, so we're in the, I would say, in the last 15%, 20% of cleaning up 2425, so we should be up to date, and we're also opening, we've already started 2526. The staff has already worked through their working budgets and inputted everything that they are requesting for this next year. So now I'm updating the payroll part, which is 85% of the budget, so that is, that is where we are right now. We did get the FEMA money, so that'll be part of our budget amendment information that's going to be coming for the special call meeting. We have some revenue and expenditures that are going to have to be adjusted. So, the July meeting moving forward, it's going to be budget, 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 and that's where we are. And then I'm sure we'll have updates on the road study because of the contractor as well. Any questions? I want to thank the staff for doing their budget part, because that's for 2526, it's been, it's been, it's been real.
Yeah, yeah, yes, so you said, you said you were hoping 2425 would be completed by May?
No, well, well, I'm sorry, by August the 5th.
Okay.
We'll have, hopefully, all of the corrections that we need for 2425.
Okay.
Yeah, because the balance, the bank reconciliations for 2425 were almost... Yeah, because the bank reconciliations for 2425 were almost, when I say 85, 90%, I don't want you to, it's us being up to date. We have that one little glitch, but with what we have right now, as we're going, we'll be at 100%, hopefully, for 2425 with the bank rec. Because if we haven't finished the fiscal year, we can't be at 100%, right?
Right, right.
So when I say like 100%, I mean, as we're going through, by the end of the month, that month is also reconciled. We'll be, the way it kind of should be. You finish a month, you pay your bills, we do it at home, you reconcile your budget. So we'll be on track with 2425. We're still not quite there yet, but we're getting there. But at least 2324 is done, so we can get those audits. And hopefully, this is wood, right? We'll be on track to do our 2425 audit when we're supposed to be legally, by statute. So we'll be, that's our goal.
That would be amazing. Yes, thank you.
Could I make a comment, Mayor? So I was looking up the legislative updates for the 89th session, and Senate Bill 1851 was passed, where they said if the municipal cities do not complete their audits in a timely manner, they will start to be penalized. So I just wanted to, just, something we've been working on for three years, and we actually may avoid any penalties because of this. So I want to give a big thank you to every one of the staff and to Mary.
Thanks.
I really, because I know this has been way, many of you have had to do things way outside of your norm and your comfort zone and even your own work. And I just want to say thank you, because I know it's been very, very difficult, but I also am very, very happy to see where we're at. And so just a big thank you to Mary and the staff.
Thank you.
Yes, here, here.
Anything additional from city manager update?
No, they just, we're going to have the budget. He'll be back 100% next meeting, so I'm excited that he'll be here. And he's been already working, the city manager, on reviewing all the revenue. So we're really hoping to bring you everything that you need in preparation for that August date. We'll have the calendar for you at the next special call session.
Oh, great. I have a quick question on the conversion. You made a comment about the conversion of utility billing. What's the status of that?
Yes, from what we understand, November 4th or 5th is when the actual date was when the deposits and the information from, where we actually went live with FundView, but the deposits were made in ENCODE prior to that. So that has been that one little glitch of bringing those deposits into 2425, because we had to try to get down, get the reports from ENCODE for 2425, and then they needed to be, they have to be manually entered into FundView, because the account sequencing is different. So it's a little bit, it's harder to do a bank reconciliation with a different program. So you have to put everything in to FundView. And so that's the delay. We know it, we know it needs to get done, it's just the timing to get it done.
So it's just that one month? It's not an ongoing conversion issue?
No, because we're not, we're not using ENCODE anymore. That's the last piece of the data that was not in FundView that was in ENCODE. And that was because there was a delay in moving or using FundView or utility billing.
Okay. We still need to clean that up, but otherwise, it's working now.
The information is in FundView, yeah. There's still some little glitches that we have with account numbers that we're updating right now for 2425. And then moving into 2526, we are creating, I've created new account numbers to separate, to make it easier, so that everybody knows this account number is to pay for this particular item, because we don't have the decimal system that ENCODE have.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, a couple little notes here for the viewing public and those in attendance. Just a heads up to counsel as a reminder, a special session on the 23rd, correct?
Yes, July.
Okay, yep, this month, the 23rd. So we will have a special session, as Mary indicated, it will be budget, 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 and then I think we're probably going to throw in a little budget at the end.
And some P&amp;Z?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit of everything. So for future agenda, the notes that I have taken for upcoming meetings, we need a stagger terms on there to make the final determination. And I guess, Neil, just to verify, we'll draw straws that evening and determine...
You said...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So...
Yes, lots of...
So... Rigged straws? I can do that. So yes, just for staff, just stagger terms moving forward, make sure that's on there so we clean that up. And then the discussions from the P&amp;Z, their recommendations, make sure that we get those put back on there for actual consideration. Yeah, for voting, so thank you. So we'll go once around the horn with counsel. Dorothy, do you have anything, closing remarks? Oh, normal time, yeah?
Normal time. Five o'clock for the workshop, six o'clock for the...
Five o'clock.
Yeah, yep, yep. Dorothy, anything in closing?
I just want to reiterate what Roxanne said, and that is, thank you so much for your Herculean effort to get these audits back on track. After being five years behind, it is no short of Herculean. That's the only word I can think of. So thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Bruce?
Yeah, I mean, same thing. You know, getting these audits straightened up and getting everything in line, it's been a long time coming, greatly appreciated, hard work, but everybody's done.
Thank you.
If we can get that all taken care of and put behind us, it'd be absolutely fabulous. Thank the citizens for showing up tonight. Again, staff, thank you for what y'all do each and every day. And...
Well, thank you for coming. I already said my piece. I do have one question. The last month, we had that Smith Park Trail proposal. Do we have to approve that as counsel, or was that just a presentation and they're going to go forward with it? I think they already have the money for it.
I know last month was just a presentation. Yeah, I need to follow up with Stephen on that one. That's a good question. Yeah, that one completely slipped through, so...
Otherwise, thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, if you want to pull up some notes on that one. Sam?
Well, I wasn't here during most of the problems, but it's very scary to think of what it was like. And I'm really appreciative of Mary and staff and manager getting us back on track. Sounds like after a lot of speaking and talking, hopefully, we'll stay there. Hopefully, we won't be... That's one. I have a question. Is Steve coming back for Friday's coffee?
Yes, he's coming back Wednesday.
So Stephen, that question did come up. So Stephen is slated for coffee on Friday. Yeah, so council member Bishop will be at coffee.
But you can join him. It doesn't have to be just one, just be a quorum of all...
I won't be there probably for the audit. He wasn't immediately involved here.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure somebody covers them.
Oh, he doesn't show up, you're it.
Neil, anything for us, sir? Just happy to be here, huh? Anything closing from...
[laughing]
Yeah, so just for me, for me to you guys, thank you for being here. We always appreciate it. We thank you for being involved, and don't hesitate to reach out. Staff, thank you so much for all of your behind-the-scenes work. You're appreciated, except for PD. And yeah, everybody be safe. Like I said, the weather is out there, and there's a flash flood warning, Chief, in effect right now for Eastern Bell County, which includes us. So please be careful. Turn around, don't drown, it's not worth it. And just be safe out there. So thanks for coming. Everybody be careful. Have an NPR kind of night. We are adjourned 18...